Good evening, welcome to the Ameren Council Combined Meeting on Monday, July 8th, 2024. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please show that we have Councilmember Fuller remote today and we have Councilmember Cheney absent today. Other than that, all councilmembers are present. Up next, we have approval of the minutes of the June 5th, 2024, and June 10th, 2024, regular meetings. Comments, questions, concerns by council?
No, they seem to be all right.
Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to those.
They were annotated to reflect the change.
Correct.
Okay. Because I read them earlier today and I want to make sure it was written. I'll move to accept the minutes.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Kerry's. Up next, we have Reception Delegation Quarterly Main Street Update, Chairman Bollinger.
Hi, you guys. So, it's been a few months since we've gotten together. The Main Street Advisory Board has come together these past three months. We've made our mission really personal. We've added some emotions to the mix. And we've seen something really great come out of even our worst days together. And the things that we would like your action on and the accomplishments that we want to notify you about are what we'll talk about today. So, our topics of action, these are things where we need the board to actually be active, or the, sorry, the council to be actively giving us answers. And I've tried to break them down this way to make it really easy so that we say as a board, here's what we need from you. So, those items. The first one is the Opens Meetings, the Open Meetings Act. The board has previously requested that the mayor and council allow Main Street committees to meet without the Open Meetings Act applying to them, as long as the information from the workshop-style meetings are brought back to the Main Street Advisory Board, open meetings each month. So, what we ask from the council and the mayor is that you update us on your motion to move forward with our request, so that we can, we can do that. Main Street Funds and Budget. Our board is asking, why do we need to send our budget to the mayor and council for approval, for money that is within the purview of Main Street functions? That is something that I cannot answer, and I cannot answer that for you. So, that is something that our board is actively looking for an answer for. What approval are we asking you for and why are we asking it? Our Main Street Advisory Board Terms. To establish the terms of each member of our board, so that we can move forward with our strategic planning in the coming months and years. The current city code and the information we have from City Hall are in conflict with one another, and we've previously asked for clarification from the council on what the terms are of each of our members. That way, we can also share that with our members, so that we have a really clear and concise idea of what terms we're looking at, what timeframes are we looking at, and what can each individual person do in those times, and when do they need to pass that information over and start really vetting new people and bringing new people into the fold, so we can support them in the second leg of that journey. We have, let's see. As the chair, the Main Street Advisory Board feels that my attendance should be at every single council meeting instead of the quarterly meetings, as outlined, with a specific interest to correct council members about any agenda item of the Main Street Board that they comment on incorrectly at meetings without our board represented. So, as our board does not operate autonomously, there's not a single member of this council, either, that the Main Street Advisory Board has authorized to speak on its behalf. In addition, I have not been notified as chair of any conflict that has arisen from any council meeting or workshop that should be addressed. Our board requests of our mayor and council that, in the event there are items pertaining to our board, that we receive notification in writing, so that it can be addressed immediately, as well as at our future meetings if necessary. I assure you that this will aid in avoiding speculation, and as a board of dedicated volunteers that are serving for you and with you, that they currently feel that their city government does not respect them. I ask you, if any council member is opposed to this at the conclusion of this meeting, that any concerns you may have individually or as a group from this meeting or the last, be sent to me, so that they can be reviewed by our board as a whole, and then we can address them. We really feel, feel strongly as an entire board coming before you, that there's nobody sitting before me now that should have to feel like you represent our board, or you're explaining to other council members what our board meant when we said it. Those are really important things, that if you feel that way, you need to be coming to our board, so that we can discuss it as a whole, and we can tell you exactly what it is we meant. Third-party social media. The board has previously requested this council to review its third-party social media policy, to allow members of this board selected by this council to promote, notify, and support Main Street events, without having to process them through the Main Street manager and Tawnytown manager first. Our request is that you update the Main Street Advisory Board on this particular request, or provide a timeline for doing so. That's the end of the items that we have that require action from this council. The next piece is just items of notification for you, so that everybody knows what's going on, and you can address anything that you feel there, you know, you have concerns with, or you have things that you'd like to be more involved with for us. So, the first one is that the Main Street Board has experienced several cancellations of meetings due to city and board obligations that the board is moving now to control, through voluntary chairperson stand-ins for regular meetings only. That includes a backup, to the backup, that will take place with or without city personnel present. That way, we don't ever have a board that feels like we can't meet, just simply because somebody couldn't make it. We're putting precautions into place, so that that does not happen again. We have that our strategic planning has moved forward, and the first big step is to gather for workshops, in addition to our regular meetings structured very similarly to the mayor and council's meetings, to accomplish a more effective agenda when we do meet as a board. Currently, there are three in the works to discuss our budget, strategic planning, and operating procedure. Our Clean, Green, and Safe Committee represented Main Street in the Great American Cleanup during a Spring Beautification Day, with a focus to reduce litter, reduce, reuse, recycle, and beautification. To give you an idea of what your Main Street Board is able to accomplish when giving some of the, some of that luxury, is that with $250 roughly, we had 46 volunteer hours that were spent on this singular event, touching and impacting over 6,000 Tawnytown individuals. They collected 350 pounds of litter and debris, 70 pounds of litter and debris for recycling and sorting. And at the end of the day, the Main Street goals for this event were to make the Main Street area more inviting, attract new shoppers, encourage more locals to get involved in programs such as these. So, again, 46 volunteer hours. I know some of this council was involved in some of that, and we thank you guys for that, because you being there to support events like this in your own hometown, on your own Main Street, is a big deal, and it didn't go unnoticed. The same committee has also been collaborating with the Tawnytown Police Department, and they're currently working to reschedule a community safety walk for the Main Street area, so that'll be upcoming. The Economic Vitality Committee reports that there are several new businesses looking to expand onto Main Street this quarter, including Candy Quest, Sticky Snowballs, One York Street, and One Frederick Street, which has been working collaborally, collaboratively, with the Main Street manager to update the existing Main Street business page through the city's website, as well as to facilitate the other, with other board committees to work toward the grand reveal of the new Main Street, Tawnytown website anticipated the end of July. Our Design Committee is still vacant. We all kind of chip in where we feel that we need to be for that current one. If there's anybody that this council can aid us with in putting somebody into that position, it is very welcome and, and absolutely needed. Our Permissions Committee is working on proposals from local publishers to discuss the Tawnytown record. Our Organization Committee is working on promotional material for upcoming events, volunteers, social media. This committee is also working confidently with the city to provide more transparent and accurate and timely detailed reports of incomes and expenses for our Main Street. Our Arts and Entertainment is working on continuing Main Street events and acting upon the ideas of the community. For example, a local author stroll brought to her committee recently by a local author, with the intention of creating something magical that people want to come to. This committee looks forward to continuing a relationship with Tawnytown Parks and Rec, and the board seeks to better plan Main Street events that collaborate with and do not conflict with city events. The CBIP grant that supports sustainable community areas is available to Main Street areas. It closed its application on June 5th of this year, and applicants will know by June 22nd the distribution, if any, of this money to our Main Street, and will be able to update the council at the next quarterly meeting with that information and where it went, and what we're looking to do with it. Our, our next meeting is July 31st. As a proactive board, we look forward to open communication with this council and the city government, and having answers and addressing any and all topics this council feels is relevant to our board and our Main Street.
Thank you. Are you open to questions, comments, concerns by council?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you. That was a very detailed report, and I very much appreciate that. You had, you, you raised an excellent question regarding why is there council involvement in the budget process, in your budget process, and I, I would tend to agree. We have discussed the, getting the subcommittee meetings out of the Open Meetings Act requirement. I believe that that's gone to the city attorney.
Correct.
And hopefully, there will be a revision to the enabling ordinance that comes out of that. You have an interesting question about the staggering of the members' terms, because of the way that the ordinance is written, you know, in terms of the staggering, and I don't know that there's been any assignment as to who is which term, and whose, whose terms expire when.
We do. So, there were letters that were sent out to each of our members in the very beginning. Having said that, the very beginning was quite some time ago. So, I know the code is very different. So, I feel like it, it is exceptionally appropriate, and it's something that doesn't come up often in our meetings, mostly because nobody knows that it's a thing. So, I'd like to be able to give our, I think our board deserves to know that information, because they've signed up for something that's currently kind of open-ended and/or extremely short-sighted, depending on how it goes, and I feel like we-
Some of them are only two-year terms, based on the last election, and I forget how it all reads.
Just touching regards to that, we've, have we touched base with Jay in trying to figure that out, what it should look like?
We've touched base on it, but we haven't spent a lot of time on it.
Okay.
And to give you an idea of the, the expedience of that, if we leave it the way that it currently is, some of those terms end in December. That leaves our board incredibly, incredibly unprepared for the end of this year, to continue moving forward on some of the things that we have forward motion on right now.
So, how many of the terms end in December?
That I'm not sure.
Okay.
Two.
Is it two?
Is it two of them?
Because right now, you have two, you have two empty chairs, correct?
One.
A one, okay.
Yeah, just our Design, Design Committee. But yeah, but that's something, and I feel like I'd almost like our board to weigh in on some of that, too, when the city talks about it, because some of our people, if their terms are ending sooner than later, it, it may be worth discussing amongst our board and the council, hey, is it something where they feel like they can continue on a little bit longer than originally anticipated, just simply because some of these boards really are doing good things? And I don't want to see that rug pulled out from under their feet when, when we're finally moving forward in a good direction.
So, here, if I may make this suggestion, you, you have a strategic planning meeting that you're trying to set up.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering is, if, if a recommendation to council in terms of revisions to the ordinance may be in order to come from, from your group, instead of being dictated down to you from over here, tell us what would work for you? You know, what, you know, this is, this is a, it's a volunteer organization, and so we ought to be able to rewrite this a little bit, to make it a little bit easier for the volunteers to volunteer and do what it is they want to do.
Right. And I think they would not be opposed to that, to doing recommendations for it. I do say proceed with caution, because our city code says something different than, than that.
Yes.
So, we, I, I'd want to be very sure that we're not undermining a city code, and we're not undermining the board, all at the same time.
I'm not saying you, you-
Right.
For you guys to be rewriting the whole code, but certainly, if you have recommendations as to help change it to what works, you know, because the, one of the things that is, is, you know, clear in the enabling legislation is that it's up to you guys to set your own work rules and, and how, you know, what your structure looks like. So, I think, I think trying to fix the term staggering and, and, you know, like I say, the budget, the, you know, having to come back to the, the council for budget, you know, as, as sometimes seems to happen, we have kind of a hybrid organization here in terms of how Main Streets function. I spent a fair amount of time at MML, talking to mayors and, and economic development directors and Main Street people, and there is kind of a split out there. Some of them are very, very city and council-run, others are very independently run. So, we kind of have this hybrid model, where we have this independent board, but it seems to be kind of top-down from the city, and I'm not sure that that works for us. So, you know, I think that if, if that's something that comes out of your strategic planning conference, that might be a good thing. So, maybe just something to look at in your agenda for that. But thank you all for the work that you all do. Oh, um, let me, something else. Oh, the author stroll, I, I listened to that idea on the, in the recording of the meeting, and I thought that that was a really cool idea. And I could see where that would, could blossom into an entire book fair, author, you know, book festival, the Tawnytown Book Festival, kind of thing. So, I really do, I do like that. I think that that's a pretty cool idea. So, thank you. I'm, I'm done. Anybody else?
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Councilmember Fuller, did you have anything?
Sorry, I had to keep that off, because my internet's being a little sketchy. I would just ask why we haven't spoken with Jay about any of the, the legal ramifications and the issues. Aside from that, I think I would rather just hold off and have a discussion, go back and watch, and, and think about replies.
Jim, what kind of priority do we have on, I guess, just figuring out the Main Street terms, the staggering, the open meetings?
The, the list of items to work through with the city attorney is rather lengthy, and this one just hasn't gotten to the top of the pile yet. City Attorney and I are going to meet, hopefully, over the next week or so, and kind of reprioritize that list. So, if council wishes, we can bump this up and push some of the other stuff down.
I think we kind of need to hear back what it all looks like before we-
Okay.
Make any decisions here on council, as Councilmember Fuller said.
Yeah, and we do, just to put that into perspective, these are, some of these things we've been asking as a board for, for six months, for clarification on them. Some of them actually before Jay was able to come back to the city, even while there was that interim in there, is when we were asking for some of this, some of this clarification.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Up next, we have Councilmember Statement Regarding Conflicts of Interest on Agenda Items. Any councilmembers like to make a statement today? Hearing none, proceeding forward to public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. Anybody in the audience want to start tonight?
Hi, good evening. I'm Ken Yada-Brooks at 52 East Baltimore Street, and I want to start off by saying thank you, mayor and council, for having the first public grant on your website. And we appreciate that a lot. I'm not sure how many people participated in that grant, but I do know that it was helpful for most of us who have offices here down in downtown Tawnytown. So, but I did have a couple of questions in reference to the grant. Just, I was unable to reach anyone and to ask questions, but I do want to ask about the, for all applicants section, when it's speaking about families, cousins, children, parents, that they're not able to do labor or have contracts with this grant. The question I have is, if we have family members who are contractors, why aren't we able to use them for this grant funding, is, I'm asking, and concerned about that. But I do thank you for putting it on the site and making it available for us all to use. Some of you guys are able to answer that question for me tonight.
Did you want to touch base on it at all, or, I know we have-
I'm-
Or, I can invite Meech, would you like to talk about it at all?
It, it's just a question, because I, I, I did have some family members who were available to do the work for us, at a minimal cost, that were contractors, but we were unable, unable to ask that particular question to anyone. So, I'm just asking, why is that particular here? I've never seen that before. I'm just asking.
And I, I don't want to speak for the economic development director, but, but I would think-
Is it possible you guys can get back to me later, just before the next month, maybe?
I would think there would just be concern about the, the appearance, the possible appearance of any impropriety or something like that.
If they're a licensed contractor, I don't, they have to follow the same rules as a contractor.
Sure, I understand that.
But that's all. And I do want to say that we had our soft opening on June 1st, over at Tawnytown Community Partners, and there we main, mainly dealt with Our Breast Friends, which is a nonprofit organization dealing with women, trying to pull them together to be able to get their mammograms done together in a, a uniform way, and to hold each other accountable. Our grand opening would be on August 24th of this year, between 10:00 and 2:00. I'm just asking, because we are planning on getting with some of the downtown businesses, if maybe Brandy and I can get together to talk about that, discuss how that looks. I have gotten with a couple of businesses here in town, and they are very interested. We want to put up some things for the kids to do. And as a matter of fact, we had 12 kids just yesterday, or another nine, eight or nine kids during the week. They helped water some of the plants. Just want to get them more involved in some of the things that are going on here in town, to kind of, kind of keep them out of trouble, and, and give them some service hours as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Additional public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items? Closing, three, two, one. Next up, we have Resolution Ordinances and Agreements. First, we have Approval of Fiscal Year 2025 Town-County Agreement. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
A motion to approve the Town-County Agreement.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Kerry's. Up next, we have Adoption Resolution 2024-08-2025 through 2020, through 2030 Capital Improvement Program. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Jim, did you want to?
As, as was mentioned in the Parks and Rec Directors' Report this month in the packet, the Splash Park scheduled for Memorial Park, we do not have adequate funding lined up. We were kind of dependent on grant funding to be able to do that this year. So, we're recommending that we push that back to two fiscal years. Right now, there's very little development in the pipeline that's going to replenish the park impact fee, or the fee in lieu of open space, both of which we can use for park capital projects, and we simply don't have the funds to do it this year. And it's based on the progress of projects in the development pipeline. It's not really looking like we're going to accumulate enough park impact fee even next year to really make much of a dent in it. So, we would like to, to push that back to FY '27.
Do you need to reissue the document?
So, we would, we would just make that note, and then approve it as amended, and then go back and adjust the, the appendix with the Excel sheet to push it back to '27.
The Planning Commission did discuss that, so they were, they were aware of that. That was part of our discussion.
Yes. And, and as, as noted in the Parks and Rec Directors' Report, you know, as we, as we have delved more and more into it, we're finding that, that the price tag and the operating costs are, are above what was originally expected. So, there's, it, it very much looks like we may actually need to have an attendant for all the things that are required for us to do with the Splash Pad, and that was not part of the original vision for it. So, pushing it back a couple of years gives us more time to evaluate it and get all the facts down, and also hopefully save up some money if we see some development that will replenish the park impact fee.
Yeah, as I was reading it, it sounds as bad as having a pool. You know? All the things you do.
Mind.
So, you need a motion with the amended? So, if there's consensus to push that back, then we could say, right, the motion would be to approve as amended, to move that project back to '27. Consensus among council?
Yeah, I, I-
I got a question. We got consensus by a motion with the amended part?
Yes.
I think that would make it most clear, yeah.
Yeah, so I would, I move to accept the Capital Improvement Program with the amendment regarding the Splash Pad.
Close enough. Yes. We have a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns by council regarding it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Nick Kerry's. Next up, we have Resolution 2024-10 Water Allocation for July. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Move to approve the water allocation for July.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Kerry's. Up next, we have the City Manager Report.
I'm ready. Trying to be quick this month. I'm going to start out by extending a thank you publicly to our Parks and Rec Director, Wayne O'Vicar, for a very nice July 3rd event with the fireworks and such, and all the food trucks. All in all, I think the event went very well. Also, kind of put a shout out there for Public Works and Tawnytown Police Department, who coordinated with, you know, keeping everybody safe and getting traffic moving out of there afterwards. So, I think it went a little smoother than it has in past years. I know the intersection close to my house was pretty much clear in about an hour, which is a little bit faster than, than we've seen some other years. So, kudos on that. So, Capital Improvement Program we just talked about, so I'll skip past that one. Let's see, the, I think Attorney Guller will probably make mention of this, but we're continuing to work on the, what would have normally been warranty work, but since the contractor declared bankruptcy, now we're having to seek a claim against the performance bond. So, that is ongoing. We're still trying to get signatures for the easement plaits on the ripples to York Street Storm Dream Replacement. And design work's ongoing with CDM Smith for the FY '24 Sewer Rehabilitation Project. On that one, we have come into, when the survey work was done, there are some conflicts with structures that have been erected or installed atop the sewer line. So, we've brought the Attorney Guller in to help us with some research on the deeds of easement related to that sewer line that's been in the ground for decades. So, that's kind of thrown a little bit of a wrench in it. And unfortunately, some of those areas where there's conflict with the structure are areas where we really need to dig and replace, rather than just reline those segments. Segments where we need to reline, and there's building or something like that, really not a big deal, because we just go manhole to manhole, and we don't have to disturb anything on the surface. So, that's going to take a little bit longer to work through now. Let's see. That is about it for me, unless anybody has questions.
Questions, comments, concerns by council for the City Manager?
Jim, the-
Jim, the grant that Ms. Brooks referred to, who's issuing that?
That is one that Economic Development Director Meeche obtained through the Sustainable Communities. It's eligible for, anything in the sustainable community is eligible for the building improvement program. So it's administered through the Economic Development Office here.
Our county FEDC.
Our EDC, so J, so Meeche, yep. And he has...
Who writes the rules for it?
Okay, right. Meeche stood for this round.
Okay.
Yeah. So we tried to take what we had from the last round and kind of refine that a little bit for this round.
Okay.
However, for the actual approval, I know it's going to be Meeche and then two other, is it Economic Development official?
From outside of the city.
Outside of the city.
He's lined up some others who...
Make sure it isn't just someone inside the city making the approvals.
Somebody outside the city along with...
Along with Meeche.
Meeche.
Yes.
Makes the decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Like a, like a jury.
Almost like accountability.
There's like a scoring system for it, and Meeche has lined up for two others from outside of the city to assist him with that.
Yeah, so it's a...
To rank it.
Yeah. The only question I have about that is Councilman McCarron mentioned something about it at the June 10th council meeting, but I never saw anything published about it until it came out on Facebook on June 18th, and it had a deadline of July 5th. And I'm wondering if, can we do a better job at getting these things out there and getting this information out to the property owners in a more timely fashion? Because it was not a lot of time at the end, as Ms. Brooks recognized, and there are some quirks in the rules, and if you called in here looking for answers to questions and weren't able to get them, I apologize for that, but, you know, we need to see where that breakdown is and address that also. I, you know, that should not be. We're trying to hand out money to improve the downtown here. We ought to be able to answer people's questions about how that happens.
So even if the application period is relatively short, we can still try to promote it leading up to that application period so that people can start getting their materials in order and get their contractors' estimates and such. So we can certainly try to expand that next time around.
Further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward to new business.
Good evening, everybody. We'll start off with some good news, and that is related to the PFAS lawsuit. As you know, we filed a lawsuit on that, and we're in the middle of recovery already with one of the big settlements, which was 3M. But the settlements, which we figured once would happen, one settled, the rest of the polluters would settle as well. So there is that recent announcement of BASF. You've heard of that company. They've reached a settlement as well to kick into the settlement fund, and then Kitty, you've heard of them, they make fire extinguishers. Those companies have kicked into the settlement fund as well. The city has already filed its claim form. The deadline is next week, but it's already taking care of that. And once that happens, now it has to go through an administrative process with the courts, and we maybe will see a check to us at least for the first settlement by the end of, or by the start of next year. And then we start the second round, which will be the settlements that I just mentioned right now. So this is good because the money coming in will help us offset the treatments that we're going to have to do to the water. So it's not necessarily free money, but it does help offset the taxpayer burden. So positive news there. The next, we'll start with negative news. As the city manager mentioned, and you all are aware, the contractor that was doing the Roberts Mill Road project and also the Fairground project, DeLauder, has claimed bankruptcy, and they have creditors that are as long as your arm, people that they owe, and the bankruptcy court, it is quite a mess. And the issue that we have, and I want to make sure we're very clear, let's get it on the record for everybody, the project is completed, but there is punch list items that were being needed to be done when the weather broke. And I say that, it's summertime, while this was all anticipated last November. So the city held back about $20,000 in retainage to do punch list items. These punch list items were like yard repairs, things like that. It was never intended to be like warranty work, where they would have to go fix major things. Unfortunately, there was noted last November that there was problems, and the problem was with the asphalt, the laying of the asphalt and things like that. And they said, well, let's let it overwinter and see how it looks in the spring. Well, of course, in the meantime, DeLauder has claimed bankruptcy. It's a subcontractor doing this. MT Laney is the subcontractor. We've been trying to work with them throughout the beginning of the year, but as you can imagine, in a contracting relationship, we don't have privity with them. They work for Laney, or they work for DeLauder, and DeLauder is our person. So we're going to have to work with DeLauder. Laney is saying that they're really not going to honor anything. We've been dealing with their lawyers. They're not going to honor anything until this thing deals with the bankruptcy case. To make it more complicated, Laney says they haven't been paid. So they are wanting to file a claim against the payment bond. We have two bonds, right? A performance bond that it gets done and a payment bond that the subcontractors get paid. So Laney is filing a claim against the payment bond. And as the city manager mentioned, we are going to be in a position that we need to file a claim against the performance bond. The issues that have come up now are, you know, I won't pretend to be an engineer or something, but they're worse than we thought. It's not just fixing people's yards. It's something to deal with the top coat, maybe the paving, and it's good enough to say it's the paving for us. You know, people that know paving will know better. But bottom line, it's going to cost more than $20,000. That's all we really need to know. It's going to cost more than $20,000 to fix this the right way, and, you know, you can't get blood from a turnip, so DeLauder doesn't, is in bankruptcy, so we can only turn to the performance bond. A lot of people say, that's great. You know how we say we're going to get bonds for projects, and we think, you know, we're really being safeguarded? Well, we are to an extent, but the bonding company, they don't really take our side, right? They're very difficult because they don't want to pay out like an insurance company. So we're going to make claims to them. What all that means is, is that this is beyond just paperwork and beyond just public works. Kevin and his crew have done great documenting everything. I got all the information. But it's now going to require the town engineer to get involved and CDM to actually put the professional spin on this to make our claims and to actually deal with what in our world would be an insurance adjuster that's going to come out and deal with these performance issues. So that's part A of the bad news. While we're dealing with part A of the bad news, that was Roberts Mill Road, part B of the bad news is there is something wrong. Okay, that's a technical term for me, is something wrong with the second part of the project, which was the sewer replacement. Somehow, the road is caving in where the sewer line is, and they can give you all the details, which, you know, we don't need to know, but the bottom line is same contractor, DeLauder, same bond, same project, I mean, separate project, but same issue. They're in bankruptcy. So we have to deal with that. The things that's coming down the road for you, now you know what's going on, is yes, we're going to work with the bonding company. We're going to see what kind of claim we can get. We're going to have to get estimates as to what it would cost to fix this. We'll probably end up fighting with the bonding company about what the fix will actually be, and in the end, we're going to have to determine whether these things present a safety issue, that do they need to be fixed before we ever get a claim or a payment on it? So this is going to be an involved process. The issue with the bankruptcy is also an involved process because while we have $20,000 we're being held, again, that's not much to do anything with, that's technically an asset of DeLauder. So we might have to work with the bankruptcy court because all the assets of the debtor are subject to the jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court. So we might not just be able to keep it, even though that's a drop in the bucket. So that's the bad news. So I gave you some good money news and some bad money news, so we'll get away from money now, and we can talk about the Main Street, the issue that came up. Jim and I have talked about what needs to be done. The obvious situation is that there's a language in the ordinance that you passed a couple of years ago that says that subcommittees are subject to the Open Meetings Act, so that can just be struck if so desired to take the subcommittees out. The Main Street group would have to also adhere to some other tactics, as you know. You can't have a subcommittee that's made up of a quorum of the regular committee, just like you guys operate, or else that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. So that is a relatively easy fix. It would take an ordinance of two months, and it's done. The issue that the city manager and I had is while you're doing this and going through the public process on this, are there any other things you need to change? And that's what really we need to hear from to add to it. Not so much the staggered terms and the whose terms expire, that's more of an administrative thing that we can find out, but are there any things that you need? Is there anything that the committee wants? Is there anything that, you know, wasn't thought about or was ill-conceived the first time around? It would be far easier to make one change at one time than try to do piecemeal changes. So that's something that I think the best way would be that, you know, the chair, she was there a minute ago, she can talk to her rep, whether it's Jamie Shie or Jim Weprick, and then he and I can talk about what needs to happen, and we can resolve that pretty straightforward. So that's that. We've also made progress. I'm sure that you saw Ms. Chaney's written report, but the chief, and I'm sure he can tell you, he's there, we've made strides to get the body worn cameras redeployed. The chief has instituted a plan to get that done. So that will happen, and you can figure by the end of this month of July, body worn cameras will be back on the street. One of the things that the chief and I are going to work on is reviewing the underlying policy. That policy was instituted without legal review. If you recall, that was the hiatus time, and so there are certain things that we probably want to at least tweak in there to make sure that we don't have any problems going forward. So my goal, as I told the chief, is to have, you know, those kind of comments to him so he can institute it in a general order by the end of the month. And that brings us to, eventually, we're going to have to talk about how do we address the provisions in the code where the council is supposed to approve police policies and things like that. Right now, we have been operating under kind of an emergency situation to get these policies and things on the street, but at some point in time, we need to do that where we bring the policies to you, they're approved, and then the city should probably take the strategic look of saying, we probably don't need the elected officials involved in police policy. That's an unusual thing. But I understand, since it's in the code right now, we might want to do it and then change the code to say that we're going to make this more of an executive administrative function. So that's positive as well. And then the only other administrative thing that we've been dealing with is, my understanding is several residents have approached the clerk for applications to run for office. Of course, the election isn't until May of 2025. So the applications, while we have them in the file, they are the applications from the prior election. All the dates on the ethics forms are keyed to a prior election, and the authority really to approve those forms is with the election board, the local Tawny Town Supervisor of Elections. And they typically get active January, February, because our deadline in the code is nine weeks prior to Election Day, Election Day is in May, so you can kind of tote that back. So for people who want to run for office, you can certainly come pick the form up, but you're going to have to fill out another form when the forms are approved, and so this form is really not really worth anything at that point in time. I think there was some talk that if the laws change or the rules change, you'd be grandfathered in if you filed early. That's not the case. The rules, I don't, nobody said they're going to change them, but if the rules did change, they would be the rules that are in effect on the day that you take office. So that's that. So you can work with Clara on that, but it does put a little stress on things. If the mayor and council want to jumpstart this, you probably need to tell the city manager to make that a priority, and then the next thing we need to do is talk about the board, the super board of supervisors of elections. You know, they serve a two-year term, so we need to get that enacted again, and their term really isn't up until the beginning of this election cycle. So we need to make sure all those things fall in place, and since it's really July, usually that's not on our radar. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just add one thing. City attorney spoke about the PFAS lawsuit, and related to that, just to highlight from the Public Works report, this time around, we had applied last year also for the emerging contaminants funding for a well that's turned off because of PFAS contamination, and this year, we ranked nine out of 90. So we're optimistic that this year, we may actually qualify for some funding to be able to put filtration on that well and bring it back online, so.
Could additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
I'm a little fuzzy on the election board. When does the term of the current election boards end?
They have a two-year term, and they were appointed, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but probably something like February, March, or April, two years ago. So their term would end February, March, or April of this year, and we can get that specific information.
Of '25.
Of '25, right, of the current coming year.
All right. So would the current standing board be the one that would write the new forms?
If it was directed that we want to start getting these forms out and getting them ready now, then we would make the current standing board do it.
Okay. But otherwise, we'd wait till the new board comes in and have the new board do it, which...
That's typically correct, and as you all, you've gone through the process, the election board handles the election form, and then the ethics board, which of course is not related to the terms that we just mentioned, they have their form that has to be filled out by candidates as well. And while it seems pretty simple, it's a choreography of dates because you're not really a candidate until you file the election board form and the ethics board form and get approved by the ethics board, and then you're a bona fide candidate. And so, again, it's kind of like the off-season. Nobody's doing that yet, but if you all decide that that's a priority, tell the city manager, and we'll make it happen.
Okay. And two questions, actually, there's more to Jim, just based on some things that you said. I assume that we've covered that sewer line where the cave-in is? On, is it against Fairground or wherever the, where the ground is settling?
Yeah, it appears to be an issue with the compaction above the sewer line.
Above the sewer, so it's not, it's not like stuff is leaking in? Okay.
Right, right, that's not the...
All right.
Right.
And pavement markings on Roberts Mill? I don't know that it calls for much because it's been, the street's been narrowed so much there, but...
The DPW has been out painting yellow curbs and stop bars and things like that, so I'm not, I'm not certain of where crosswalks are supposed to be designated on Roberts Mill Road, but if there are some, I'll file up with DPW and make sure they're marked.
Okay.
But generally, we don't do center line striping or, you know, white line striping along the...
Well, it's the crosswalks and stop bars, that was...
Yes, okay.
...in terms of...
Okay, thank you.
And actually, with the pending resurfacing...
Right, you didn't want to spend a lot of money in effort at...
Right, and then have to go back and redo it.
Now that's going to be some period in time, we probably...
Right, if that's going to extend out months and months, we may want to go ahead and move that, even though we'll, or move that forward.
Yeah.
So.
Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding the legal report? Hearing none, proceeding forward to new business. We have monthly financial report up first. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council regarding that? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Move to approve the monthly financial report.
Looking for a second?
I'll second the motion.
All the, any further discussion by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have accounts payables. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion in regards to that?
Prove the pay of the accounts payable.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have the special event permanent Coach Xavier's basketball camp. Any questions, comments, concerns by council?
I have a question about what this is about. Is this Coach Xavier a licensed coach? I mean, does he do these things other places?
He's been doing it yearly, correct?
This is business?
This is a...
What is this? Why, I mean, is he just a guy from the neighborhood wants to coach kids on basketball? I mean, is there any guidelines as far as... I mean, is there any guidelines as far as child safety screenings and things like that? I mean, what, what do we know about this guy?
I believe this is a, an event that we have approved previously, but I do not know details on the gentleman's background.
It's been yearly, I remember it last year, I think the year before maybe.
I think we've done this a few times.
I don't remember anything about it, but it could have been during my hiatus. But I would think that there would have to be some kind of insurance, there would be some kind of...
We'll have to supply some, take that insurance.
Protection for young folks and things of that nature that we should be certain of before we move forward.
So, for the special event permit? For the special event permit to happen at the park?
I mean, is that, is that something we, I don't think we've ever requested that for anybody else's special event permit.
Yeah, we have not vetted, to, to the best of my knowledge, we have not vetted the background of individuals who have put on various skills camp, whether it was tennis or hapkido or, you know, yoga in the park, or, you know, or other sports camps. You know, this, this has indicated that it is a nonprofit, it's got yes checked off for that, and, you know, they obviously will have the proof of insurance and everything in order to qualify.
It just seems strange that we would invite somebody into our park system that we're not sure, I mean, that we've never, maybe we've done it before, maybe we've checked it out in the past, and if that's the case...
I'm not sure that we can be getting into that business.
Fine, but I just don't... No, we've, we've never asked that for another special event permit.
Operating a clinic that is going to generate funds for somebody, I mean, I don't think he's doing it for free, and...
I mean, even for all the festivals that we host, I mean, those have kids that come out to them, but we don't ask any of that kind of information for a special event permit? I don't see why this would be any different.
I don't either. I'm not seeing any issue with that.
Is this somebody that Lorena has suggested to us, or does she have any relationship with these black people?
I mean, use of the park is use of the park, anyhow.
Yeah, it's public use for the special event permit. And again, this, this is something that has gone on in town for multiple years. I mean, we've never asked anything special from the other special event permits, I would...
Yeah.
Make it to where we should ask it here.
I, I, you know, I think, I think we're leaving ourselves exposed.
We can put the city attorney on the spot and ask him to opine on, on the question.
Jay, do you have any opinion on the matter?
You love, you love that. Obviously, if we don't have it in a policy, it's what I preach, as I preach to the police departments I work with, these might be great ideas, but if we don't have a policy that backs them up, then it's arbitrary, because you just made it up as you went. So if we feel that we should do backgrounds, we need to make that a policy, and then we need to do that. We've never done that, that I've, that I've had.
We do background checks for the coaches for Little League.
So the, the difference, of course, is we, we have a policy for that. You know, we, we have a policy that says if you're going to coach Little League in a field that we own, the Little League has to have, you have a background check for just those reasons. So in the event that we want to try to do that for special use permits, we would need to say what we want to do, and then I would imagine that, you know, I'm thinking about how you would write it, a special event permit to have a festival like you did last weekend would be different than a special event to do like a skateboard thing or a BMX thing. I think we've done those before, something like that. So I think it would need, I mean, bottom line is, you'd have to have some thought put into this if you wanted to do that.
I, I just don't think that's a business we want to be in.
It doesn't...
When does this occur?
It's too late.
I think the, I don't have my tab...
August, August 3rd through the 31st.
I'd say it's the summer.
Next month.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? I'm looking for a motion in regards to the matter.
I'm moved to approve the permit.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Kerry's?
Or nay, I'm sure.
Could I just mention really quickly, I did get some information from Lorena. He has been doing this for three years, and he is covered by a certificate of insurance. So if he's had that extensive, you know, of a, of a...
Being vetted.
Thing going on, then I'm pretty sure if there was a problem, it would have already shown up.
And he's just going through the regular process that we do for all special event permits, so it makes sense, motion...
Well, I think at very least, we should have his certificate of insurance on file.
We, that comes with the special event application, correct, Jim?
Yes.
Yep.
This is a little different than a family gathering or a particular group.
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No, I...
Moving on to street sweeper purchase, Jim, would you like to lead us off on it?
Okay, details about the piece of equipment are, are in your packet, so Public Works is looking at, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing this right, Delevaux Mechanical Vac Assist Street Sweeper. The bottom line outfitting it the way we want is $238,805 would be our upfront cost, and to help make a decision whether or not to move forward, I work with Public Works to kind of work through basically a cost benefit review compared to what we're paying per, per lane mile or per curb mile for our existing sweeping contract. Short version is, we can do it cheaper than, than we're paying now. So, you know, it does look like, you know, over the, this is, this is estimating a 20-year lifespan of the, the sweeper itself. You know, we, we do take good care of our equipment, we house it indoors, so, you know, we would expect we could probably get a bit longer life out of the piece of equipment, you know, for something that's not used daily. At any rate, it looks like our monthly breakdown for the, the vendor that we're using now is $1,674, and we would be able to sweep a comparable amount of curb miles for $1,270. Now, we, we took a midpoint of DP, of Public Works salaries, so we, you know, didn't take the lowest guy, we didn't take the highest guy, we kind of took the middle range, although everybody in the department will be trained on the equipment so that anybody can hop in if they need to. But the intent would be to kind of use that mid, you know, midpoint, or less expensive per hour person to operate it regularly. So with that, and actually, let me...
What are you looking for?
There any questions, you know, fire away.
Are there two different models under consideration? I saw there, the pictures look like they were different machines.
They're just different colors.
They're just different colors.
Yeah. Yeah, they're the same machine, the D3.
I like the, it looks like a, like a Zamboni with a brush on the front. I assume it'd be highly maneuverable. Just as a question, did you ever get a price on that electric one we saw at MML?
I did not, when I got back and kind of posed the question. Public Works had already demoed another unit that they were very happy with and had looked into the, the CoStar's pricing program to be able to acquire that unit, so they were, they were pretty much set on that one. And just, you know, the assistant director, Randy Myers, sent me some details this morning, so the standard contractor pricing, if it'll open up for me. Would be $249,000, so by going with that, that bid service, it's about $11,000 cheaper.
What are you looking for specifically tonight on it?
So, we, we are ready to move ahead with it if, if council would like us to, so if you want us to move ahead to purchase it, we, we would...
I'll make, I'll make a motion. A motion to approve the purchase as outlined by DPW.
Looking for a second? Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Kerry's? Councilmember reports, starting with Councilmember Tillman.
Well, let's see, where to start? Should I start with MML or start with my, let's see? Sorry, I'm finding my right paper, here it is. Yeah, I was in remotely to the planning commission meeting, because I was down at MML, so I didn't quite get everything, because our, our internet connection was somewhat sketchy. But I believe we did do approval of the preliminary and final site plan for AVAPCO? Where did we hold the...
Preliminary.
Preliminary only, we, we did not do the final site plan approval. Tawney Town Police Department was seeking a waiver for a storage shed, and that went back to them for some more information. And then we reviewed the capital improvement, improvement program, and that was probably the biggest part of our, part of our meeting was the capital improvement program. We talked about a lot of the things in it, especially a lot, a lot of discussion about the new Public Works building, but in the end, I think everyone was satisfied that, that we're on the right path with that. So it was not a whole lot of review about active site plans, not a whole lot going on with that. One of the things that Tiffany Fawcett from the county brought up, and I want to encourage everyone to get involved in and do, is to take the Carroll County Housing Study. You can find that at the Carroll County government website, and, and just look for the housing study, and there's a QR code that's very, available in various places, I don't know if that's on the Tawney Town Connect app or not. Jay, if you may want to think about trying to get that up there, just as a, help them. I think it's an important thing to do for everyone to participate in that, so they can get a better handle. You know, housing is, is becoming a real issue here in, in Carroll County, especially as regards to affordable housing. So with that said, I want to proceed on, talk a little bit about MML. It was a very good week. I spent, city manager Whiprick and I spent our Sunday touring the town of Berlin, which was really, it's a very cool little town. They were having their farmer's market, which they do on Sundays. They, of course, like many other places, have the benefit of being able to close their main street, which we do not have. So, you know, the farmer's market had become a real boon to all of the local businesses, to the point where all local businesses were coming in and opening up on Sunday mornings to accommodate the farmer's market shoppers. And so that was a pretty cool thing. One other neat thing that we saw were the rail bikes, they have a section of, of little used railroad that goes through town, and there's a company out in Western Maryland that rents rail bikes that you can get on, four people on a thing, and pedal your way down the railroad tracks. Be interesting if we could get good communications with the folks that own the rail lines here through town, that would be possibly a really cool tourist thing to do. That said, that's not necessarily the easiest thing to do, because now it's corporately owned, it's no longer Maryland Midland Railway, so we don't have quite the in there that we used to have. There was a good session on emergency preparedness, and, you know, I, I know that we have a emergency management plan. I wonder when the last time the dust was blown off of that and it was reviewed? And a question about whether or not there is, in charter and code, about who is, you know, what the succession is, who's in charge, depending on who you can or can't reach. There was a nice thing on tourism zones, a good, good... The only, the real thing with the tourism zone is being able to give some kind of incentive to businesses, and of course, the question is, since we don't collect a lot of taxes ourselves, is how would we make that work? And the only place that first jumps out at you is, of course, with the EDUs, and I'm not sure if there's much incentive we can offer with that, but it's an idea. Lastly, the, the session that had the most impact on me that wasn't, you know, walking the streets of Berlin, was the city of Leonardtown and, and what they've been able to accomplish over the last 10 to 12 years. And it's, it really is a testament to the power of everyone working together and what can, what can, what can be done when towns work together like that, and when the city works with the developers to kind of, you know, cut the red tape and, 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 and work together for the vision of everyone, but the vision is the real key to that, and they had a, a plan, and not only a comprehensive plan for the town, but also a separate plan for the downtown. And, and that's kind of what helped work that together, they had to create it, they called creating a climate of success. And, you know, there's a lot...
We can do, but first, we have to all be pulling together to, to make that happen. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and just leave it off and, and move on to Councilman McCarron.
Well, we've talked a lot about it, economic development, particularly Main Street, so I might have spent a whole lot of time, but Mase and I met this afternoon, and we went over the, the town pretty thoroughly, I think, and we look like we're moving forward. The, the success of the second Saturday seems to be holding, and we've got some fun events coming forward. We've got karaoke, karaoke, I can't say that word.
Karaoke?
Karaoke, yeah.
Karaoke?
Karaoke, there we go. And what was that other thing, Mel, maybe it was the...
Aydin?
Yeah, there we go. So that sounds like fun, but anyway, that's coming up this Saturday. The facade grant that we've been talking about, and the, and the interior grant for the commercial buildings, was very well participated in, and I thought it wise that Mase had solicited the help of the Thermont Main Street person manager and the Westminster Economic Development Director to help him sort out the participants and how much they get and so forth, so it should be an unbiased selection in that regard, so. But that was a good idea to involve our neighbors to help us with that project, and likewise, you can look forward to helping them one day, maybe. Couple of businesses, we are hearing about a candy store coming in down where the Priscillas used to be, and restaurant renovations up here on the corner that should be ready in about 90 days, and all in all, I felt, I felt we're, we're moving forward pretty well. We still have some, Randy gave a very nice report tonight, I appreciate that, and I thank her for the hard work that she puts into that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to watching this Main Street committee grow and, and develop and, and contribute to the overall benefits for our town, but I think one of the biggest things we can do, we, we can do for Main Street, we did just a few minutes ago, and that's approve that street sweeper. I think that we, a tremendous boon to, for a facelift for our downtown, and particularly our town at, at large, because it'll give us that, we have in our disposal those equipment that we so badly need, so, but all I have... So let's put it all ahead.
Councilmember Foster?
Okay, well, DPW definitely thanks council for approving the street sweeper. They're very anxious to move ahead on that. Other than that, with DPW, it's all been discussed by the city manager. Habitat for Humanity had their opening for the two houses. The residents aren't actually moved in yet, but the houses are for the most part ready. I did, I was invited by one of the homeowners to come and tour the house, and they are very, very nice. Habitat meets this Thursday. And one of the things that they'll be discussing is when that date is actually going to happen. I think they're waiting for final inspections.
It's already happened, they actually have their occupancy already. They've received their occupancy.
Okay.
Last week.
Okay, that's.
Board member.
Okay, so they've received their occupancy permits. And looking over my agenda for Thursday, I see that we are going to have a volunteer work with these homeowners on economics to, and sort of give them a help along about how to maintain the homes and stay economically vibrant. Silver Oak Academy continues to move in the direction of what they are going to become. They are hiring staff, and maybe in the next couple of months, they will actually have occupants. But as I've reported before, it's going to be a much different kind of facility. And as that comes along, I will let you know. The MML conference was very nice. For those of us who've been going for a number of years, it is sort of revamped, very much so. So, but all in all, I think it's, it's for the best, and it was very enjoyable.
Councilmember Fuller?
Okay, so just to start off with, all the events for Parks and Rec are on the Facebook page, on the website calendar, and posted at the library. And let's get started. Our annual reading in the parks contest kicks off August 4th. Contestants take pictures of themselves or family members reading in any of our parks. And the top three contestants with the most pictures submitted will win prizes from local businesses. The summer scavenger hunt is in full swing. There are painted rocks hidden in all of our parks. There's a label on the back of the rock, and you take it to the library to turn it in for a prize bag. Prizes are for adults as well as for children. The Tawnytown Artist's Fest is Saturday, July 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., also at Memorial Park. Another free event with three bands, children's craft tents, food trucks, beer garden, and art vendors from all over the state. The day before that, or I should say the evening before that, is going to be Family Fun Food Truck Friday. It's July 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Memorial Park. There's going to be pony rides, petting zoo, bounce houses, games, and live music by Bootleg. There'll be lots of food trucks to choose from, and it is free for attendees. The youth tennis clinic kicks off tomorrow with local tennis instructor Darian Nail, who has led our tennis clinics for the past four years with great success. The clinics run on Tuesdays until August 13th. And they're off, we're also going to be offering adult tennis clinics starting at the end of August. Movies in the Park series kicked off on Saturday night with a showing of The Chronicles of Narnia. This is a free event, and we also provided a free small snow cone from Kona Ice for the first 25 attendees. There were about 45 attendees total. There's also free water and popcorn that were offered. The next movie is the classic Mary Poppins, this Saturday, the 13th. And then Heaven is for Real on the 27th, The Neverending Story on August 10th, and Despicable Me 3 on August 24th. All of the movies start at 8:30 or 8:45, depending on when it gets dark. I guess finally is the Independence Day Celebration, which was last Wednesday, which was overall a resounding success. There was hundreds of attendees from Tawnytown and the greater community at Memorial Park to share the evening and enjoy the entertainment, food vendors and fireworks. There were lots of positive feedback from the community who loved this free event, and obviously, it grows every year. Hopefully, if, as we go forward, there will be additional food vendors to better accommodate the increased crowds. And there's the thought to add live music with a band rather than a DJ. And of course, that's going to be funding allowance. We want a special thanks to the Department of Public Works for assisting with traffic control and everything. And then there was everyone else who helped to make it such a safe and fun event. The one thing I would mention is there have been, over the past couple of years, an issue. And we need to make probably, or we probably need to look at making some resolution amendments because there are a few individuals who think that their wants are more important than the majority of other people. As the city staff were being threatened and abused and cursed at by these individuals, excuses were made. It's been a yearly occurrence, and I think it's completely unnecessary for our staff to have to do this. Obviously, at the Parks and Rec meeting, there will be a conversation about, you know, whether or not this event can continue if there's going to be this constant interruption. So for, at a later time, I would like to bring up some, some amendments that will help cover and make this event enjoyable for everyone while keeping safety and fairness in mind. Not to add a whole heck of a lot, but the conference, MML conference was very informative, as always. It's always nice to be able to speak to and, and just pick the brains of other people who are in the same situations we are, just as far as how to think outside those boxes. And Diane and I took a fantastic class on negotiating, and I think we learned a lot from that class. So I guess that is it for me tonight.
Yeah, it was a very lively class we had. Fun. If I might.
Councilman?
I have a question. I think the, the water survey that was mailed to the homes, do we have any numbers on how well they are being returned?
I do not have numbers, but I know that we have been getting stacks of hard copy for those who chose to complete it that way, just about daily. There's been, you know, probably three quarters of an inch or an inch.
Got people asking me questions about it.
Yeah.
And even I started to fill out paper, and then I decided, oh, I think I'll try to do it the other way. And hooray, I did it.
Good.
I thought it was very simple to fill out online, and it was, it worked easily.
Yeah, after I got into it, I said, oh, this isn't so bad.
The hardest part was taking a picture, getting it downloaded on my phone, and the drag and drop to actually put it into the survey. So, but yeah, so I'm glad to go with.
Just hoping that we got a lot of response.
It seems like we've been getting a positive response so far.
Good.
Yep.
So I'll let Councilmember Chaney do her combined report when she returns back in August. I just want to touch on MML. I attended the municipal leaders caucus, and I'll serve again as chair for another year. I took the PEIA class, I took the meetings class, I took the ethics class, had, went to the mayor's lunch, networked with the different mayors around Maryland, went to the MML leadership orientation, took various other sessions. And I am now one course, one core class from graduation for the Academy of Excellence. So got that going. But overall, it was, it was good. The classes are very informative, they do help you, they help you do what is required in Maryland of the different, for instance, the PEIA.
The ethics, definitely something that all elected officials should be attending. Other than that, looking for a motion of adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, just two things that have come in since we've been talking. The Assistant Public Works Director just texted me that we've gotten between 700 and 800 responses back so far on the water lines.
Oh, good.
Inventory. And the Public Works Director texted me a little while ago when we were talking about the Fairground Avenue sewer, that yes, they have televised it, and that that is in excellent shape. So just to confirm that. And last thing, we talked a little bit about the board of elections and the terms being up in 2025. I do want to just point out, we have two vacancies on that board. So if anyone is interested in volunteer opportunity, we have two slots for the board of elections open.
How many people are on the board in total? How many are supposed to be on the board?
Five.
Five?
Five total.
And we do have vacancies on our other boards as well. So if you are looking to serve in one of the committees, one of the committees of Tawnytown, you know, visit the Tawnytown website. I know they have that application form.
On there if I'm correct. Yeah, don't hesitate.
To reach out and join one of the committees, we've got plenty of spots.
And DPW has two positions on the city website also listed.
Do I say, once again, I know, I think we mentioned this last month, but congratulations to Diane for receiving a lifetime service award.
From the Malibu League, so.
That was the fun part, too.
Yep.
Looking for a motion of adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
The comment?
We, so we do it at the beginning on the combined ones.
On agenda items?
Yep, for agenda and on agenda items. No, all good, all good.
To the end there.
Looking for a motion of adjournment? Diane made the motion.
I'm ready.
Made a motion, look for a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.